Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, Public Laws of 1975. This meeting had been fully advertised in the Adria Bar Press issue on August 3rd, 2017. All municipal clerks, townships, boroughs within the regional high school district have been filling with the requirements posted, but notice has been ignored. Approve all minutes? Motion? Mr. Moses? Second? Thank you. Any discussion?
Mr. Asatola?
Yes.
Mrs. Panario?
Name.
Ms. Slavitt?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Mr. Rona?
Yes.
All communications are on file. Mr. Sampson, to all you [inaudible].
I feel like I should start moving. So, the board members, if you come on down, because there's going to be a couple of presentations as part of the superintendent's report, we'll utilize the big screen here. And we're going to open up this evening with the recognition of our Spooktacular Award recipients and the folks from the Spooktacular Committee, Mrs. Kaye will speak to, and Mr. Kane will speak to some of the specifics about Spooktacular, but just from my perspective, the superintendent, I'm proud to say that it is one of the most original community events that you're going to find in a school setting. It is one of the most absolutely perfect days where you watch literally dozens and dozens of students across the descent on downtown Freehold. They're bringing to life within the span of one day an art design that they've worked on in class prior to, so there's a lot of project management that goes into this. The community comes out in force. It's only possible by a really dedicated group of volunteers from Freehold who just go above and beyond for their community and understand the importance of partnering between schools and community. Federice donates all the pizza, which is fantastic, to feed the kids. It's just a perfect day. We had awesome weather this year. We made the bold call, and folks were worried about that once you cancel it and you come back, that doesn't ever work out, but it worked out perfectly. Annette Piazza says she used Brooklyn Instinct, apparently, for that weather. But, you know, so these types of partnerships are what make our school community special, so it's an honor and privilege to have these folks come out tonight and to award our young artists. And when you walk around on the windows and see what our kids do within the span of a couple hours on the window, it's absolutely amazing, breathtaking, perfect, and it's a fun day. It's a day that I look forward to every year. So, I'm going to call Mrs. Kane, Mrs. Guy up to the podium, and they'll take it from you.
Thank you, Mr. Sampson, for that board welcome, and also for the information about our committee. Before actually beginning, I'd like to call in Roger Kane, who's going to give us a little history about the window painting.
As Mr. Sampson alluded to, the Spooktacular Day of Painting Windows is one of the highlights in town. I have a couple pictures here, or picture here, that I'd like to share with the board. But not only do the students come out and they show off their talent, they are absolutely goodwill ambassadors for the regional system. I mean, they interact with the people that are downtown, and we get so many compliments about how polite they are and what a nice job they're doing. But this whole window painting thing has been a tradition in Freehold since the 1940s, the late 1940s. I have a picture here of them painting, of the students painting downtown. Of course, in those days, it was just Freehold High School. So, we've increased it to include all the schools, plus the other main intermediate school in Freehold. So, as I said, this goes back to the 1940s. There was a little break in there for a while, but now it's been going with us probably for about 25 years. So, it's just a highlight of the day, and you should be so proud of your children that come out and paint, because they are a delight to be with. And all of our supervisors that are with them say the same thing, so it's just great. And we thank the regional and the board for such a great opportunity. I hope I didn't steal anything. Oh, are you sorry? I'm done.
Thank you, Roger. Roger was former chairman for about 25 years, so a lot of this goes, credit goes to him too.
And I'm the old [inaudible].
As you can see, we're excited to be here this evening to celebrate the creativity of all of our art students in the regional. And on behalf of the Freehold Spooktacular Committee, I'd like to thank the regional board, as well as Mr. Charles Sampson, superintendent of the schools, for the ongoing support of the annual window painting event. Without your cooperation, not only for the window painting, but also for our annual costume parade, it would not be as successful as we are. Unfortunately, this year, Mother Nature did not cooperate, and we had to cancel our parade, which I think may have been the first time in the history of our awareness. But in the past, all seats bands, and again, thanks to the regional, I've participated in the parade. And of course, tonight, we honor and acknowledge our art teachers, cast and present, for encouraging these amazing students and furthering their artistic endeavors. Jay Robinson, administrator supervisor, who is not a courtesy again, is also an essential member of our team and always has our best interest at heart. At this time, I'd like to thank the Spooktacular Committee, many of whom are here with us tonight. If you could please stand. They work together. This is probably the majority of the committee, so you can see we do have a small committee. There are missing a few, but it's just, that's the new place right there. They work together for many months and consistently provide fun, now we're at Spooktacular events in the borough during the month of October. And for those not familiar with our committee, we also decorate the borough with the cornstalks and the bows. The bows are provided by especially few florists in downtown Freehold, and we also sponsor the Jackalade Contest. Before we begin tonight with the actual presentation of the trophies, I'd like to take a few moments and thank two, one special individual, who jumps in year after year and makes her lives so much easier, Michael Federice. He's been with us for so many years, supplying pizza, as Mr. Sampson stated earlier, to all the students, and the teachers, and the committee members left over. We're truly grateful for his partnership in this event. I'm not quite sure what the students look forward to most, a day out of the classroom, but our Federice's pizza, I see some shaking in his eyes. So, thank you, Michael, for all you do, and also for joining us this evening. Now, I'd like to turn the presentation over to Barbara Kane, who's also been very instrumental in the window painting contest for many meetings, and she's going to continue with the presentation.
First, I would like to acknowledge and thank Sharon Mitchell, the district's communication coordinator, for arranging for media coverage and taking pictures of all of this. I'm told that there is an amazing display on the district's website. Annette Piazza is also here with us this evening. Where are you, Margaret? Judy and I have worked with Annette for 15 years. For those of you who don't know that, she is the regional glue that makes everything happen for both window painting and parade. She continues to go above and beyond to coordinate the art students and the bands. She is so much more than a regional employee, she is also their biggest advocate. We cannot thank her enough for her efforts, patience, and her friendship. Annette, would you please come to the podium? Annette, this is a small token of our deep appreciation for everything you do to help us with our events. For 15 years, you have stuck by our side, and your efforts have gone, have not gone unnoticed. You are an asset to the regional, and I hope we appreciate you as much as we do. Thank you. And now, I'd like to begin with the presentation for the 2017 Freehold Hall of Fame Spooktacular Window Painting Contest. We will begin our presentations this evening with the honorable mention category, which is awarded to two student artists from Freehold High School. They are Rachel Giewers and Gianna Sookah Lee. They have painted a beautiful picture of the masked Belgrino. Their art teachers are Hannah Vinaldi and Jenny Lozetta, and their principal is Mrs. Linda Joel. Will the girls please come up? The teachers are there, please, and welcome. The next presentation is for third place, which is awarded to three student artists from Colton Lake High School. Unfortunately, Alex Kavanaugh is not able to be with us this evening, but Lauren Ator and Juliana Hanna are present, and they have painted a skeleton face with flowing blue and white hair. Our teachers are Lauren Arcello and Lauren Lippken, who are either are here this evening with us, but representing is Derek Nova, and principal is Dr. Brian Dulli. Will the girls come forward? Our next. who are painting a snow White with an apple. Our teachers are Robert Andrease and Miss Burger, who principal is Dr. Angelo Ozzy. the traveling trophy, which is coveted, very much so, and it is awarded this year to two student artists from Freehold High School, Emily Almida and Sarah Puckett. Painting is Pin Tear or Mango. Our teachers are Arista Alvarado and Max Boyle, and the principal is Mrs. Elizabeth Higley. Will the girls please come forward? I don't know if you, I don't know if you all heard that, but that is the trophy that travels each year to winning school, and that is why it is so well sought after and so highly competed for. And that concludes our presentation for this evening. We thank you all for coming and again, to the board. And superintendent, thank you so much for all of your support. Thank you, and good night.
Congratulations again to the winners, awesome artwork. Thank you, Spooktacular Committee members, really appreciate it. Feel free to stay for the extended, the meeting. We're compelled to do, by code, is to do a biannual report of violence and vandalism. And some districts and boroughs is very differently. Some folks will sit up at the table and just read statistics, and that's the extent of the report. Other folks will do larger presentations. One of the things that we like to do with this, is anything in the Freehold Regional High School District that is a requirement, we always want to make sure that we own those mandates in our own particular way. So, one of the things that we started to do a few years back was to really, rather than just report out on incidents of violence and vandalism, it even sounds bad the way the code is written. You know, we have, we have almost 11,000 teenagers in our school system, and we know that on any given day, in the mix of 11,000 teenagers, some of them might not make great decisions in a particular moment in time. What we pride ourselves on are all the programs, opportunities, and support, and proactive clubs, programs, activities, faculty and staff members that we have within this community to help guide students to make better decisions. And one of the things that we always do on this evening is we highlight particular programs across, across the district. So, we're at Manalbun, so we wanted to use the Save a Brave folks this evening. So, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Dillon, the Director of Guides and Operations, and he'll walk you through the next phase of the presentation.
As Mr. Sampson spoke earlier, before I go into the Violence, Vandalism, Substance Abuse Report, I do have the honor of having our Save a Brave students present a little bit about what they do here at Manalbun High School. These are senior students, they are selected into this group. I can tell you, and you'll speak a little bit more about it, there's about 70 students who apply, and Mr. Powell, our student assistant counselor here, who also advises the Save a Brave, has the very tough task of selecting about 20 students each year. So, what I'd like to do is first, to let up this captain, [inaudible], and she just speak to you about the Save a Brave.
Save a Brave was created in response to the tragic loss of a Manalbun High School student, Carly Moniz. Carly lost her life due to a driver's carelessness, which was completely preventive. Carly was a community leader and involved in clubs, athletics, and service programs. A Manalbun High School student still emulate the respect of lacrosse player who consistently inspired her peers to make good decisions. Over one decade ago, a group of Manalbun High School students attended a program called Keep the Drive, where they were inspired to create their own homegrown organization that they called Save a Brave. These students created Save a Brave with the intention of educating their peers to make smart decisions, especially when it comes to [inaudible].
So, what is Save a Brave? Save a Brave leads students, only available to select seniors who consistently are respective with positive choices, evolve, and make good choices. Each year, more than 70 students apply, who become Save a Brave members. Approximately 20 students who apply complete as a Save a Brave member this year. Save a Brave students compete by exam, whether they're, whether they're in the classroom, in the hallway, or off. Our organizations, school presentations, social media, contests, everyday interactions encourage students to do the right thing, make the difference. And I would like to show you guys a public service announcement created by the class of 2017.
[inaudible]
Mom!
Hello?
Mom!
Yes, honey?
Can you open this for me? Mom, watch where you're going!
Good job!
Mom, watch where you're going!
Thank you, Chris, and I'd like to invite Ms. Sheel up to speak a little bit more about the Save a Brave.
So, what does Save a Brave do? Save a Brave has a rich history in providing programs and winning contests that promote safe decisions, including the Student and Parent Driver Program and the New Jersey Great Interstate Alliance UGAF Race Annual Contest. Each spring, Save a Brave puts on an interactive and engaging program that educates all juniors and their parents on the dangers of driving, as well as the importance of making smart choices. The video that you just saw is a public service announcement created by the class of 2017 Save a Brave students. Manalbun High School, Save a Brave, has been named a champion school for the past eight years. Manalbun High School took first place and won grand champion three years ago. We're hoping to repeat our success again this year. And with that, I'd like to introduce her.
So, how exactly does Save a Brave help students make positive decisions? Save a Brave seniors talk to younger peers in a comfortable and relatable environment. Each year, Save a Brave brings in impact speakers that share the importance of decision-making through engaging and personalized stories that both students and parents can identify with. During, during the Student and Parent Safety Driver Programs, Save a Brave students put on relevant skits that highlight the importance of safe driving while interjecting humor. The Save a Brave organization has continued to foster and develop students into thoughtful decision-makers, bolstering a respectful and responsible school community.
So, once again, I can emphasize the good work that our Save a Brave students do here at Manalbun High School. Keep in mind, they're just one of many groups throughout the Freehold Regional High School District that encourages students to make positive choices, to really think things through. I'd just like to give them one last round of applause again, for the work that they do. So, as Mr. Sampson mentioned earlier, I'm going to now present the Violence, Vandalism, and Substance Abuse Report. Just some things to keep in mind, again, this is a snapshot of some conduct issues that occur here in the Freehold Regional High School District. I do want to preface that you'll notice it says Phase 2. What that means is these are incidents that took place from January 2017, so last school year, up through June 2017. So, this is about a six-month snapshot. Again, keeping in mind that we have just over 11,000 students here in the district. So, again, when you're looking at these numbers, keep that in contact, again, these are incidents. Okay, if you're looking at this chart here, you'll notice I did show Phase 2 for the year 2015 to 2016, side by side with last school year. And again, these illustrate numbers from January 2017 up through June 2017. These are the broader categories, so you can see there's violence, vandalism, weapons, substance abuse, and him, which I think most people at this point know that means the harassment, intimidation, and bullying. As you're looking at them, you know, you'll notice sometimes they will go up from the previous base, sometimes they'll go down. If you look at this data across five, even 10 years, there's really no way to predict, because you could have a really good month with not too many discipline issues, or you could really have a month where you struggle more. So, please, again, keep that in mind. Obviously, for violence, there were 24 incidents, again, so across six schools. Vandalism, there were four. Weapons, four. Substance abuse, there were 36. And harassment, intimidation, bullying, 21. This next slide breaks down the categories a little bit more specifically. So, when you're looking at violence, there's different categories, which you can see illustrated here. Simple assault, there were five. Sex offense, one. A terroristic threat, zero. Threat, six. And fight, there were 12. Again, so just to give you some context, you can see, again, the numbers may jump a little bit, but rather, you know, they're pretty consistent. This chart here breaks things down into three categories, vandalism, weapons, and substance abuse. Again, the vandalism goes a little bit further, speaking damage to property, we were fortunate to have zero incidences the last half of last school year. Deaths, there were four. Bomb threat, zero. Trespassing, zero. When you look at weapons, possession of a weapon, there were three. Assault with a weapon, there was one. Jumping down to substance abuse, under the influence, we had 31. Possession was 16, and distribution, we had one. And just to be clear about the numbers, this is not the number of students, these are the number of incidents, so it doesn't really detail whether it's one student who had four or five incidents, or, you know, a whole host of students who may have had one incident. This chart here details the types of illegal substances used, so I'm just going to jump back for a minute, so where substance abuse is indicated, if students were in possession or were distributing an illegal substance, this chart details that here. And just to be clear about the numbers, this is not the number of students, these are the number of incidents. So it doesn't really detail whether it's one student who had four or five incidents or, you know, a whole host of students who may have had one incident. This chart here details the types of illegal substances used. So I'm just going to jump back for a minute. So where substance abuse is indicated, if students were in possession or were distributing an illegal substance, this chart details that here. Marijuana was 24. Unauthorized distribution drugs, zero. Alcohol, five. Drug paraphernalia, three. Narcotics, one. Amphetamine, zero. Orbanacancer drugs, one. Cocaine, zero. Depressants and antidepressants, zero. The chart that you see before you, again, this details confirmed harassment, intimidation, bullying incidents. So please know that any time the school suspects or parent or anyone suspects that there may have been incidents of harassment, intimidation, bullying, our schools take that very seriously and they launch investigation. That investigation could take up to 10 days. We try to wrap it up and be discreet about it. So this actually shows you the amount of confirmed harassment, intimidation, and bullying incidents. So please know that there may have been incidents investigated that aren't represented here. These actually have to be investigated or confirmed by the Department of Education to be an incident of harassment, intimidation, bullying. You can see the total at the bottom, telling 21. And for some reason, last year, January, there were five. And then you can see it drops down, four, four, two, three, and three again. If you look at this across, you know, since the law started, the last three or four years, there's really no way to predict each month. You could have a month where there's more or less. So that being said, we really do our best here to be as proactive as possible. The Save a Brave students that you've heard earlier, they're one of those organizations that really helps reach students. And we, as administrators, we try to speak to students and teachers, work with kids. But it really helps we have these peer groups go and work with kids one-on-one or larger groups. So I did want to highlight them here for you. These are just some of the many programs that we offer within the district to really be proactive and prevent any incidences of violence, vandalism, harassment, intimidation, and bullying. Some that I just kind of want to point out, each school works closely with their community alliance. So most of the town in the Freehold Regional High School District have a community alliance against drugs and alcohol. So we have representatives, both students, faculty, our student assistance counselors, and also our administrators, team up with them to do as much as we can here in the schools and be aware of what's going on, how the community is, and kind of share that information and make sure, again, our families are aware and community members. Some supportive services and events, we stress for our students time and time again, whether it's in our eighth grade orientation, our administrators speak to each class, relate on it, especially as fresh about expectations for conduct. And the most important thing that I think we do well here is creating a culture of students that accept other students. And that really comes down to the principals, the community they create, the faculty, and the students as well. When those cultures are established and students feel welcome and they feel accepted, you know, you won't see the harassment, intimidation, bullying, you won't see the violence, vandalism. Of course, as Mr. Sampson said, 11,200 students in school buildings, there's going to be some. But again, these are some of the groups that really work against that and they do a great job. In October, we just came off the Week of Respect and Anti-Violence Movement. There, we do two weeks of programs for students who are bringing guest speakers. Student organizations like Save a Brave go out, post messages, get students involved on social media to really do nice things, grant a max of kindness, and get them in a good direction. Some more supportive services and events, schools at least, those are something that we do, obviously throughout the year. We have guest speakers, some that we invite back here every year because we get positive feedback, not just from our students, but from our parents and faculty, that they actually made an impact. So when our students come to us after and say, hey, you know, that person really changed my mind or they got me thinking, you know, we invite them back. And of course, we're always looking for new, vivacious speakers. And, you know, people, our students, can relate to, come in and speak to them about these things. I did list some of the speakers here. A lot of them have been, you know, to the district for a while, some of them are a bit newer. Again, I think one of the biggest collaborative initiatives that we put forward are our peer groups. So peer-to-peer training, whether it's conflict resolution, that's from our student assistance counselors, our guidance department, conflict mediation, a lot of these things, as long as administration and counselors know, we can solve before it becomes a bigger issue like a violence vandalism situation. So we encourage kids to come see us, seek your counselor out for help, because we will support you through it. Grant a max of kindness, the student assistance counselors, they run a lot of different groups. And they're really that person that welcomes kids as their friends. We encourage kids to see them before something becomes a conflict or a major issue, and they will help our students through that. Our anti-bullying specialists are trained each year. You know, a lot of us just went to a stress assessment training to brush up on the new laws that will be changing for July 2018. But our anti-bullying specialists, again, are really there as a resource, not just to our students and administration, but to our faculty and our parents as well. And of course, IRS intervention and referral services, just another way to catch students before they slip into cracks, make sure they're set up for tutoring, getting involved in good things. All the positive clubs and activities our schools have to offer. So that concludes my report. Thank you.
So the board can make its way back up to the dais. I'll continue my report in front here just while everyone's reactivating. So thank you, Mr. Dillon, and thank you to the Save a Brave students. We do like to try and highlight some of this club as well when we do this report. And, you know, I think it's incredibly important to recognize the work that some of our students do in that venue. A couple of other updates before I conclude my report. Our strategic planning process is going very, very well. We have a community meeting scheduled for November 29th. We built down a real significant base of the four sort of foundational areas of what the next five years are going to look like in the Freehold Regional High School District. There's been a lot of blood and sweat behind putting that together. We've had really extensive returns from parent surveys that we've put out, soliciting very specific feedback on a number of programs and actions. And we've run a number of student focus groups in each high school randomly selected to make sure that we get a cross-section of students to get their input. And student voices are going to be very important in this planning process. We're trying to make sure that that stays front and center as well as the student executive cabinet helping to facilitate those student groups with Dr. Basil in each of our six high schools. We've also had a real incredible run with some of our state teams over the past couple of weeks. Freehold Township Royals won the Group Four, they tied the Group Four State Championship. The number of students performed very well to lead the champions. Freehold Borough is playing on December 2nd in Rutgers against Long Branch for the state title. Back-to-back with Manalb playing against South Bend for the state title. Sort of on and on and on. And I know there's some that are missing, but they're a very successful fall season. So I just wanted to recognize that. Also, just want to recognize Christopher Dursa, a recent graduate, former student executive captain. As a matter of fact, was a long-term member of the superintendent's executive cabinet. Just this past weekend, he was named a Rhodes Scholar while at U Penn, which is an incredibly prestigious accomplishment. He's one of our regional alumni, and that is very gratifying, especially Christopher who worked closely with a number of us on a number of initiatives in the school system. My final piece to just discuss tonight is the new science assessment that's being field-tested by the state this year. You know, I think that we're in an incredibly flawed place with our standardized assessments. I think that folks need to really be aware of just how much time your child is spending testing, what these graduation requirements are that are being attached to some of these assessments. So we looked at some numbers, and there's a... To give you a short history, the state adopted new science standards. And the federal government requires that you have to have a science assessment to measure those standards at the high school level. Traditionally, those of you who are students or former students remember taking the NJABCT, the New Jersey Biology Common性Test in ninth grade. That had traditionally filled the federal requirement that New Jersey was required to meet. The new assessment is going to be given in the junior year. It's a four-hour assessment at this point in time. So that's four hours of testing. There's a graduation requirement that will ultimately be attached to it, and it's a comprehensive exam, which means it takes all of the science courses that a student progresses through over the course of their high school career. And it's problematic on several fronts. Not first is certainly the time component spent testing. But the second piece, which is concerning me, is that there's a significant, there's a physics component of that assessment. And if a student doesn't take physics, doesn't have physics, they're at a natural disadvantage on how well they're going to perform on that assessment. So some of us have been out there really railing against this. A typical junior in our system, state requirements, will, between mid-April and mid-June, spend 13 hours testing. I don't think that any of us could stand up here and say that between April and June, spending 13 hours taking standardized assessments would hurt anybody. There are some real high stakes being attached to these. The Algebra I test is, you know, for the current ninth graders, is a graduation requirement. We have a significant number of students that, in the sophomore class, that if that requirement had existed, they would have missed the cut score by a couple of points. Oftentimes, particularly in the eighth grade, and not even in our system. So I think that there was tremendous resistance to part. And I want to be clear and go on record and say standardized assessments have a place in public education. They serve purposes. They serve as one pillar of many pillars. And I think that we have jumped the proverbial shark, right? We've gone over to the other side with what we're requiring the state. And I think that more folks need to speak up, speak out, challenge it, and say that it's not good for, especially not good for kids, period. As a parent, as a superintendent, I'm both frustrated and outraged that this is being hoisted upon our student body. So I just want to be on camera and play that video and see that. I'm writing about it as well and standing up and speaking out. But I think that at a certain point in time, we have to stop some of the testing madness that's being thrust upon us. And that concludes my report.
Question. So the science tests, these field tests, are now?
Field tests this year, and then baseline data next year. So the next two years will not count.
Oh, so you think, you know, there's a case scenario two years from now?
There are no board reports tonight.
Mr. Bruno, I'd like, board, before we proceed with the agenda, just two corrections on K1 for professional conferences and workshops. Please remove the second item, which is Elena Adendriachi for the National Association of Secondary School Principals, as well as the sixth item down, Jeanette Bruno, also National Association of Secondary School Principals. So those two need to be removed from each agenda.
Public participation tonight, we have one. Joseph Gold. Joe?
Good evening. My name is Joseph Gold, and I'm here tonight as a Freehold Borough graduate, in large part due to the efforts of Dr. Russell. So I just wanted to go into some depths with you and try to figure out exactly what happened here. I traveled a long way, and I think that's why I sent that complaint to Son to come here and see what I had to say. I can put more to me on Dr. Russell's behalf last year, I tried to believe with you that the man who are accusing him of paying charges on his knocker and could not be a statement that it took me under his wing and took care of my doubts from 2006 to 2009. I also took part in the arbitration hearing and were closer to Dr. Russell's lawyer, so I know the case pretty well. A quick online search, and it's pretty clear that this wasn't the first time the district has used the approach of finding the tiniest of details alleging a ton of false and exaggerated claims against an educator. Since I've seen other board meetings where you haven't had the decency, or courtesy, to engage with questions by the public, I'll make these statements for the community and for the record, and I expect no responses or interruptions from you. But I do also understand that you don't want to jeopardize the district's tax dollars or other documents that are well-kept and lawsuit against you by making any more reckless and false statements. In fact, no student and no parent has ever written up, complained, or even came to your parents' doctor. Everything you throw at him is hearsay from people and in on the plank, everybody. Show me one student, one parent, one graduate who has anything to say about Dr. Russell and his practice at the bar. Surely after 18 months of these board meetings, and we're talking about it, if anyone in the community disagreed and thought you were right and targeted him, wouldn't they have come forward? But there's no, not except all the staff members that you got in on your plans somehow. You accused him of using steroids or something. The man is a natural health freak and always is eating healthy and is huge on exercise. You would never do anything like that. He helped me tremendously when he worked with me as part of the Freehold wrestling team. So when he says a negative, instead of admitting that you made a mistake, you attacked. You wanted to send him to that shady rehab facility that I read about in Florida. Is there any kickback from that? Does anyone want a little upset that he didn't go? Shame on you. The fact that you don't even care, forget about the silent superintendent who doesn't bring a word, even though he's achieved a charge and never even met a brand tied to an arbitration hearing for this evil attorney you have here. But you elected board members who are supposed to protect the community. Where are you? Don't you hear us for the last 18 months? Where are all the haters of this man? Because all I hear month after month is crazy and the long-lasting effect that he had in their lives. I read in the Adere Part dress that you went after his private practice license as well. Talk about trying to smear someone's reputation. There was no need or obligation in your part to go after him like that. But you were just trying to ruin him in every turn. It wasn't enough for you to get him out of your building? His private license has nothing to do with his school certification. It's just mean-shearing and reckless. Again, I say shame on you. In conclusion, as a senior in high school, I learned in history class about the notion of a king of root court. It is defined as a hearing that tries to act like a real unfair trial, but it's an illusion, not a real court. Until this case is heard by a jury and not a one-person judge, who I met, by the way, and I also have the need to make sure he was awake and paying attention when I testified, it's an illusion. Community taxpayers of the Freehold Regional, please wake up. See, that your tax dollars, probably over $4,000 at this point, is being used for what the Adere Part dress said on Saturday referred to as the fishing extradition against Dr. Russell. And this is just the beginning. Once a civil case gets started, you probably could have done some really stellar educational things for the money that has caused you to do such an evil and unnecessary act against someone who deserves so much better. Many regarding one of favorite Jizz doctors, who two years in a row, it hurts me deeply that you went after him. This vicious stance for what? Sticking up for a student? Doing what was right? I am sure he has tons of witnesses to speak for him. That is undisputable because I was one of them at the arbitration hearing in his court. And now this is all over the internet and the papers. You can't even imagine how much support he has. He's saying, I've learned something here. When an educator genuinely connects and helps a young student... When an educator genuinely connects and helps a young student, title naturally roll along, and that hopeful adult can get in trouble now, and no matter how old the students are, they will run down that educator from all corners of the world. I will hunt for walls and gun for Dr. Holman because of how much he helped me when I was young. So I came here tonight. One more thing, there will be a hard couple of words today. Shame on all of you.
Anybody else who'd like to speak? No? Okay, we're gonna move on. We're gonna take G1 to K1. Motion. Discussion?
Mr. Ascoler?
Yes.
Mr. Nereo?
Yeah.
Mr. Slav?
Jane.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mr. Roses?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Uh, yes, except for K1, Jeanette Bruno. Check.
Mr. Holman, tell Mr. Rosa what renounces the bugwee.
Yes. Yes.
All?
All.
Old business?
We have old business.
I know. Not like me to make it be longer than it should, but I want to congratulate Tom Locke, a great career, 31 years, teacher, baseball coach at Cora. And I'm sure he's going to be brilliant this year. So I just want to congratulate him on his retirement.
And I would like to congratulate the girls gymnastics team and the administration here at Manalbun High School. I was at the state sectional championship, the NJSI championship, and it was a really well-run championship. And on behalf of the NJSI, we thank Manalbun High School for hosting it. I think it's the 11th year in a row, and it really was one of the most organized meetings I've seen. So thanks to Manalbun. And with it from Manalbun, schools like Manalbun in New Jersey, they would not have these state sectional championships. Congratulations to Manalbun and Mrs. Shapiro. And also, I was in Atlantic City, I was honored to be there, did that Mr. Simpson, the superintendent of the year award, with a nice lady from Ocean City, I can't think of her name, a nice lady. And I was honored to be there, and she was there. So congratulations.
Congratulations.
New business? Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
All those in favor? Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving, everybody, to your families.